Those who are in agreement, let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, oh Father God, thank you for the blessed rain, oh Lord. And we, hopefully you can continue to give us more rain, oh Father God. Lord, I also invite the Holy Spirit, oh Father God, to guide us in today's session, oh Father. Lord, ask that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge, Lord, to, to make the best decision for our students, our staff, and our community, oh Lord. Lord, ask this in the name, in your name, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Like to open the meeting, call the meeting to order. First order of business is to recognize our guests. We include Michael Bailey, Eric Sandoval, Erica Iscamilla, Wade Carpenter, Ishmael Martinez, Emma Martinez, Lisa Ermas, April Ruman, Armando Madrigán, Randy Shep, Ryan Aldrich, Cruz Martha, Eve Martinez, Jessica De La Luz, Luis González, Emmanuel Zamora, Carlos López, Vanessa Breones, Ayana Dianueva, Elizabeth Arroyos, Judy Estrada, Roxana Linan, Brenda Hoffman. Hi, yes. That's good. If you missed anybody, just so stand up and wave your hand. Thank you, welcome to the meeting. Do we have any aldermen to patrons?
No, sir.
Do you have some consent agenda, items that we need to address, minutes of February 20th board meeting?
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve the consent agenda to include A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
I'm second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next on the agenda is some reports from cosmetology.
Ms. Vanessa Breones will lead us.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having us here today. For cosmetology, our program has successfully licensed thousands of beauty professionals over the years. This year marks my eighth year of the department in contributing to 16 years in education and 21 years in the beauty industry. A thriving program is built by committed team.
Thank you.
Emma Martinez began her journey with us in 2000 as a cosmetology instructor. Jessica De La Luz joined our team in 2008 as a cosmetology instructor. Today, I want to recognize our students that will be participating in a state competition next week. We have Elizabeth, Ayana, and Faith. They will be, I'll talk about that in just a minute. Our program is a one-year certificate, consists of 42 credits. We enroll twice a year, in the fall and in the spring. Our schedule is Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 3:30. And we have, make 100 and, 112, 100, 1216 hours, sorry. Our SPI this year, we have students complete a survey at the beginning and the end of the program to measure their sense of connection to the institution. To provide a fulfilling experience, we prioritize times for students to participate on campus activities. Last month, we just, we held our cosmetology advisory board meeting on February the 17th. We discussed expanding specialty programs in our area. We also received valuable feedback from recent graduates and their employers. Along with sponsorships from several salons to support our students in next week's Skills USA state competition. This year, we're excited to announce that we had two fall cohorts, giving us a maximum of 40 students, doubling our previous limit. This spring, we had one of our largest classes we had in a decade, with 18 students, bringing our total enrollment to 53 students. In 2024, we graduated a total of 41 students. Nine students participated in the fall graduation. Thirty-two students are anticipated to graduate in the May graduation. Our students did love having a graduation in the fall last year. Last year, we licensed 32 cosmetologists in the state of Texas. To qualify, students must complete all classes and pass a written and practical exam. We have three students pending a practical test dates and six students who we are currently working with to become licensed as we host monthly study sessions during the semester. Our school state average, our written exam is a 96% average. The state is 60%. The practical exam is 90%. And the state average is 80. We are proud of our instructors and students for surpassing the state average. Salaries in the beauty industry offers limitless opportunities, beginning with level entry positions, starting at $10 plus commission, all the way to becoming your own boss and owning a salon. Our cosmetology club is student-led. Students assisted in operating the concession stand during the college rodeo this fall, which provided us with the opportunity to raise $10,000. This funding allowed our students the chance to attend a hair show in San Antonio and purchase essential kits for our students. We attended, we attend career fairs and host community days at local schools. Next month, we are scheduled for a spa day at Florida elementary for the faculty and staff. Skills USA is a national nonprofit that prepares students for career and technical education. The cosmetology has participated for 20 years, with students achieving success in various competitions. Next week, we'll take 10 students to compete at the major state conference in Corpus Christi, April 2nd through the 5th. As a post-secondary, region five director, I have sat on the board for four years, three years as the national education team, two years as a Skills USA Equity and Inclusion Work Group. I collaborate with several colleges to enhance technical education to help prepare students at state contests. Here are a few of the colleges in our area or in my region that I'm helped to get prepared for state conference that we'll see next week. Our student salon is open Tuesday through Friday. Students must work on 50 live clients to get certified in their specialty. Since 2019, they have completed 9,570 services. Last year nearly doubled that, 21,213 services, providing a valuable hands-on education. We invite all of the board to come out and get serviced by our students, to see their expansion also in the Espinoza Building. Over the years, educators have participated in numerous conferences, such as Texas Community College Association, Cosmetology Educators of America, Texas Educators of Texas, where we explore the latest updates for TDLR regulations and modern trends dipping back to the classroom. Our students are offered excellent opportunities to attain certifications at no cost through our partnerships, preparing them for the workforce. And here are a few of the areas that we partner with. And again, thank you for your time and commitment to all of our students, and please keep our students and staff in prayer as we compete next week in Corpus. We do, we actually have four students right now. One will be competing next week, yes, he's gonna be competing. Yes, he's competing in a barbering contest, yes. We are hoping that it's in our future, yes, we are talking about expansion. That was something that we discussed in our advisory board, and we, we can hope that that's in our near future. Yes, it's a growing industry, and we are hoping that we can get that in soon.
Do you cut men's hair?
Yes, we do everything as far as full service. The only thing that sets us apart from barbers is a straight blade, but with modern technology and equipment, we're able to do pretty much the same thing. But the difference would be cosmetologists do individual eyelashes that does contain surgical glue, so it's a very intense area around the eye, and then the barbers work with a straight blade.
Where do barbers go to get their barber training?
Right now, the nearest location would be in Eagle Pass on San Antonio. So, we are definitely open to expanding our salon.
I have not used very many of them lately.
They are definitely hard to find, yes, sir.
I have a question, the, I'm looking at the licensure.
Yes.
Which has failed written, do these students get a second chance?
Yes, they do, we host monthly sessions for them to come in. As a student, as long as they come to us and they graduated, they completed all the classes, we do help them to achieve their licenses. We stated we do have monthly meetings, we also have an online program they're able to test on, but they're able to come in at any time.
What are, what are some of the reasons that students will drop?
Drop could be financial, and I had two students last semester that had babies and they weren't able to find resources to come in, and that's usually the only area that we see our students drop. We changed our schedule, we were, but the contact hours for the state, they used to be 1,500. They did lower to 1,000, but we didn't think that it was appropriate for our students to get the minimum education, so we stayed at 1,216, so we can give them all of their courses. So that would be some of the reasons.
Okay. Is there a dropout rate of students?
No, we don't have a drop rate, we were eight, we've been really great at successfully retaining most of our students. Again, the only time that we do see is for childcare. As I mentioned, we did lower our hours, and the hours used to be 7:30 to 4:00, and we moved that from 9:00 to 3:30. That does give a lot of students flexibility as far as coming from out of town. They don't have, they can drop off their children, and then they can also pick them up right before school ends, and after school care. So we have seen a huge enrollment, and that's the reason that we opened up two cohorts, because we were having a waitlist. We were closing our sessions in about 10 days. And we would have a waitlist anywhere between 15 to 20 students. So this is our second year having two cohorts in the fall. And then in the spring, this was one of our biggest classes we've had in over a decade.
I'd just like to make a comment that my sister and I had the good fortune of coming in and getting a haircut. A couple of the students, and the supervisors came around and probably one came a couple of times, the other one came about three times. And very constructive instructions for them. Like, I didn't even realize you had to turn your hand this way if you're cutting, or this, this way to cut, and anyway, it was interesting. And I'm glad I was able to do that, and I guess my sister too.
Yes, we are appreciative of everyone that comes in, again, we are open to the public. And one thing that we have kind of heard a little bit sometimes is having a big population, they each have to service 50 students, so our students coming out from out of town, it is, it, the timing of our schedule is only from 10:00 to 2:00. So as you know, that's a really hard time if you're working or if you have a job, to get their families to come in. So we have scheduled some later days for some students to get their families to come in. And we're hoping in the summer, we'll have a bigger turnout.
I had a compliment on my hair today, bye. Student.
Oh, wow.
So, anyway, I thought, you're asking about my hair, you know? I never get compliments.
Well, thank you again for coming out.
Where do your clients come from?
We, they're mostly family and friends, we do host a lot of free events for the student population to come out, the dorm students. We even have hosted many facials during midterms, so the little relaxation. As we will be going to one of the middle schools this year, or next month, and we're gonna supply, do massages, we have gotten a new lymphatic drainage system, so really excited to share that with everyone.
Is anybody in the community welcome to come, or do you?
Yes, we are open to the public.
Make an appointment or what?
Appointment is recommended, not, we can take walk-ins, but just due to testing, sometimes we have to limit the time that the students are on the floor. And we are limited as far as stations, even though we have a large group, they have to rotate. So we have 15 working salon stations, four nail tech stations, four facial beds, and we're still expanding.
Do you have people doing specifically nails instead of?
In cosmetology, they're able to specialize in everything, so it's beautifying hair, skin, and nails. So they are able to do everything. But we do have some students that would like to specialize in a certain area, and having our student salon allows them to reach that specialty with our partnerships. They can go into skin, they can go into nails, and they can go into hair, but they are still licensed to do all of the three.
What's required to get a certificate to be a nail expert?
Nail tech, it would be one semester, 600 hours. And then they would have to take a written and practical exam.
Do they do the cosmetology first and then the nails?
No, it would be a specialty course, so our beauty industry has several specialty classes. Nail tech is one, esthetician is another one. It has, an esthetician is a skincare specialist. It can also be crossed over into the medical field, and they can do, work in medical spas, they can do the botox and injections. So that is the, the kind of gray area for our beauty industry and nurses at this time. And then barbering, there is an additional certificate they're able to get. Once you do have your cosmetology license, you can come back for one semester, or you can take the full program like we offer right now for cosmetology, would be one year, and we would hope to offer 42 credits or a crossover program.
To do botox and things like that, that's a subs?
It is separate, we, there are two options. We do have, if you go to our esthetician program and our licensed LVN or RN, or for example, we have a Estella Lu, she works at a medical spa here in town, and she is able to work in the medical fields and doing certain services under the doctor's license. So our beauty industry is definitely growing and expanding in the, in the spa industry.
What's the average salary of a beginning cosmetologist, just going into, going out to work?
We look at different areas, so we, the standard area would be about 20,000 to 30,000. Again, they work off a commission base, so it just depends on how often they're wanting to work, if they want to do three days a week, four days a week. We do have some styles right now that are working seven days a week. It takes a good two years for them to start a clientele. And once they do that, then they, they have a really good future.
When, like with children, they can choose what schedule they need to be on?
Correct, and that's why we do have a lot of students that return. We have a lot of students that have gotten their degrees and have come back to school because they decided that having their own business, having their own schedule is something that fits their family's needs, along with cosmetology students. They start in the field, so they can use this as a part-time job. I would say a good percent of our students do come back to the college to take classes in advance. And this is another way for them to do something they're passionate about instead of having to go into debt, and they can, they can work.
Thank you, that's been a beautiful report, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you again.
Next, we have an EMT report.
Luis. Good evening, everybody, thank you for allowing us to come, come here and explain our, a little bit of our EMS program. Like the slide says, my name is Luis Gonzalez, and the program director for the EMS program for the SWTX, where we provide a service, our services to Ovale Eagle Pass and the Rio. where we provide a service, our services to Uvalde Eagle Pass and the Rio. Tonight, one of my lead instructors for the EMT basic course is Ms. Priscilla Rios. She's the lead instructor for the Uvalde campus EMS program. Ms. April Page, at this time, she's not available. She's at a, at a conference for a symposium, actually for EMS instructors. And the other instructor that we have in the Rio, Ms. Casey De Luna, again, she's also right currently right now doing some clinical work with an EMT in the Rio. And the other adjunct instructors that we have in Eagle Pass are Pete Abrego, Jesus Garcia and Erica Peña. And all of them have gone through our program in the past and now are currently working with us. So our, so our program includes a level one certificate as a, at the EMT basic level. Also, we have a level one certificate at the paramedic level. And also we offer the associates at the paramedic level at this, at this, at this time. And that's actually one of our student, that's actually also Mr. Pete Abrego. He was part of the first cohort that graduated our, our program. And now he's delivering babies and out in the field, but as well. He helps, he helps a lot. He, he really helps a lot with it with the students because he, he went through the process. So he understands what it takes to become a paramedic. So it's good to have one of our past students come here and work for us. Our SPI objective for this year is to increase the program passing rate. Just overall be more successful for them, for them and provide better, a better, better opportunities for the, for the students. Currently, we have fourteen students that had enrolled for the paramedic program. We have fifteen dual credits, which is in the Rio. And the one slide, we have five students here in Uvalde, apparently this semester. Our success rate, as you can see from the, from the, from the slide, our paramedic students, the first time go, we have five students that have all graduated a hundred percent. And then right now, that's the combination of our EMT students that combined with the Rio High School and as well as in Uvalde. So at this point, I want to have any questions that you might have on the program? And hopefully, hopefully I can clarify some of, some of the information that, that you can understand as far as in this, in the, in the slides.
Are these for the ambulance drivers?
Excuse me?
The ambulance?
Yes, that's for emergency medical technicians, yes, ma'am. People in the ambulance. But then not only they can work in the ambulance, they can work in the hospital, they can work in clinics, they can work in, in park fairs. And they actually, the, the, the opportunity that our students have after they become an EMT certified, they can, they, they, they have job opportunities. There's pretty much everywhere in the medical field.
The students that fail, do they get a second, second chance to pass?
Yes, they do. They, they get a second chance. We bring them in, we, we, we actually sit down with tutor them, we remediate, try to figure out what section of, of the test they failed. And we retrain them and they can come in either, either schedule an appointment with one of the instructors or we provide some resources that they can have do online as well.
With, with many of the programs, what, what we report is and what the state, you know, grades us on is the first time attempt. Very similar to the nursing, we have some that will not pass the first time. They pass it the second time, which is great for the student. But we get graded on or reported on the initial attempt. That's why you see those. But, but I believe in, in all of our programs, we have the ability to continuously assist the student to get their, their licensure.
I had a recent need for your services and I was so pleased that the guys that came out there were so gentle and caring. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hopefully you need the services anymore, right? I'm in the business that hopefully you don't need my service. And when I invite you to their, to their facilities, you don't want, you don't want me show up at your doorstep. So, yes.
I think I learned my lesson.
Yes, for sure. You don't, you don't, you don't want to get, figure out how good we're, we're at on the field, correct?
Thank you, Luis.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. Beautiful. President, good morning.
Yes, sir. Item six in your board packet. So the first item there is tech expansion. We have requests for proposals out for both the Eagle Pass HVAC project as well as the Del Rio welding, construction science and power line projects. We should have those back in and for board consideration at the April board meeting. We'll have bid numbers for that. Regarding the lease, had an update yesterday with the city of Uvalde. There's, their attorney was supposed to speak to our attorney today. So hopefully that occurred, perhaps in April, we might sign the lease there. But that's ongoing. We continue to, to work with the city to try to get that to an end. Under legislative, the House and today the Senate, I forget the Senate bill number, but they have heard what's called the cleanup bill for HB eight. So HB eight was that transformative bill that changed how community colleges were funded. This, this time, they're, they're cleaning up some of the items that they, they noticed were, were not perfect. In the first bill, the main one is to include private and independent universities. So when a student transfers to a state university, we get credit and we get funded. But when they transfer to an independent or a private, we don't get credit. So this bill includes those in, in our funding opportunities there. And that's really the, the major one. There's also some instructions to direct the coordinating board to further define the credentials of value. And, and what, what that is, is the state is taking the approach of, they're, they're willing to fund an outcome if they, they take, they compare two numbers. They compare two years that it takes a student to get an associate's degree. The wages that they lost by going to school plus the amount of tuition that it costs for the program. So they have that. And then they compare it to what they will earn in five years. So if, if what they earn in five years is more than what they lost in earnings two years plus the cost of tuition, then it's considered a credential of value and they'll fund it. If it's not, then they won't fund it. So, so that's kind of the direction and part of this cleanup bill is to, you know, direct the coordinating board to have those calculations for, for all of the different programs. The Senate did pass their, the appropriations budget. It did pass with the five million dollar tech expansion for Southwest Texas College. So the House hasn't voted on it yet, but I, I hope that it will continue to stay in there. That's, that's a major milestone to get it passed in the original bill, the Senate version. This still has to go to conference and so forth, but it, we're sitting in a very good position for those additional five million dollars for tech expansion. So if that sees it through the end, and we should know by probably the end of May, early June. If that goes through, that, that will complete the ten million that we had requested two years ago. So we, we hope, we'll continue to monitor that. Bond funding, our, our bond sale was closed on March the twentieth. They wired the funds, the funds are in our accounts. Approximately ten point eight million dollars is, is what we netted from the bond sale. So we have them there in an account that's earning interest and we'll just use them as the board approves various projects. As a separate agenda, actually as a next agenda item, we have the first list of those for your consideration. Parking lots, elevators, exhaust system and Garner Science. The gym, air conditioning, refurbish the gym floor, have an entry foyer. And then the, the big one there is adding another nursing lab to our WIT building. And we'll have those for your consideration. The thinking is we bring projects to you, the, the board approves it and then we'll go out for bids and bring them back to the board. And then you have a final yes or no based on the, on the bids that are, that are coming in. And that's really all I have at this point. We had a very successful grilling with the president, the Thursday before spring break. Thirty-nine, thirty-eight teams competed. There was a lot of barbecue. I think my office still smells like barbecue.
Great time, great weather.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a consider an act on bond projects.
Derek, you want to take that? You want to take that?
I didn't hear what was it about?
You want to present the bonds?
Oh, sure. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, everyone. Again, as Dr. Gonzalez had mentioned in his report, we are making a recommendation for the approval of the bond projects. As part of our commitment to the institutional improvement and for student success, we are recommending the approval of the following bond projects. The parking lot repairs at the Briscoe Building Drive. Administration and library elevator installation. Gymnasium HVAC installation to include cosmetic upgrades and construction of a new foyer entrance. The Garner Science ventilation installation. WIT nursing addition of skills lab and a SIM lab. These projects will be a valuable investment in Southwest Texas future and will significantly benefit our faculty, staff and students. I respectfully request the board's approval to proceed with the architectural engineering planning for the RFPs for these initiatives.
You have a idea to how much project is going to go?
We have budgeted and we have no idea what it's going to be yet at this time. Dr. Gonzalez, for the, the final monies that we were looking at?
We have estimates that we've generated internally. And so for the parking lot repairs, these are repairs on this campus and even Eagle Pass. And then creating a new drive in front of the Briscoe building. We're estimating seven hundred thousand on that one. The administration and library elevators, I want to say two hundred thousand each, is that?
That's, yes, sir, that's correct.
Two hundred thousand each. And then the gymnasium cosmetic upgrades, I think we've allocated one point five million.
That is correct.
And Garner Science, half a million?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven fifty and then a million and a half for the nursing.
That's correct. One point five million.
Million and a half?
Million and a half. So probably, what we're looking at right now is probably four to six thousand square feet?
Yes, sir. On the south end of the building or the north end of the building onto the loop. We, we have visited with our nursing faculty and, and asked what their needs were. And they need two simular, simulation labs that are identical to the nursing field in a hospital. There's, and a nursing station. And the other side of the lab would be just for skills with, with beds as we predict, as we have that today. They also want to include some office space as well. So we have met with them, we visited with them and we've got a layout of what they are hoping for.
Roughly three point eight, four million dollars, you know, forty percent of the, of the grant proceeds. And, and these are probably the biggest projects that, that we've identified. And initially, when we, we proposed the bond, we said, you know, let's take six million dollars to address deferred maintenance items. And sixty-seven million dollars and three million for tech enhancements. So we're kind of holding that, but if we do, if we are able to secure the additional five million dollars from the state, then we can free up that additional bond money to go back and add more projects, deferred maintenance projects. And then take those five million dollars to enhance our tech programs. And, and this is separate and apart. So the Eagle Pass and Del Rio tech expansion, that's being funded by the four million dollars that is in this year's budget. So that, that's not even including those two.
Do you have a timeframe or?
So the.
Are you going to do one and then do the other or then?
So, so the idea is the parking can go on. In fact, we've got an old, I wouldn't say old. We've had, we had the architect look or civil engineer look at our parking situation. So we had a lot of the work done already. So that one is actually ready to be let out for bids. We, we could probably bring that to you at, at the April board meeting. The administration, library and elevator, that the architect will have to design plans for that. We have mechanical engineering looking at both the gym and the Garner Science since they both deal with air conditioning and exhaust. Our plan is to put that together as one package and have one company bid on both of them. And then of course, the, the WIT and nursing, I mean, you're, you're talking about nine to twelve, eighteen months on that one because we haven't even designed anything on that yet. We've, we've talked about it. We've kind of drawn some lines on a piece of paper of what it would look like and what needs to be included. We need to make sure that what we add is, is big enough for what they need, that we have enough space to do it there. So that one will probably take a little bit longer. But they're, they're not, they're not structured in such a way that we have to wait for one to go to the next one. These, these all can go on simultaneously. But realistically, I, I think parking lot would begin first, followed by the, the air conditioning. Work at the gym and Garner Science. And then the elevator and the WIT, you know, that might be a separate project. We might bundle that together and have a general contractor. We're looking at what's best, whether we include the elevator inside admin building and library or we build it outside and, and not mess with the structure, just build it outside where it opens. But those are all questions that we've asked our architect to start thinking about.
Will the elevators be inside the present buildings or will they be outside attached?
We're looking at both, right?
Yes, sir.
The easiest way would be to attach it right to the side of the building. So for example, in the admin building, that hallway that runs in between the, the two suites and the bottom, perhaps on the backside of it, we have four doors in the back. We decommission one side of the doors and put an elevator that goes to the top there where you're not disrupting the interior. It, it would be very disruptive for all the construction to be inside. And same thing in the library. It, it might make sense to put it on the, on the wall where the generator is between the, the library and the cosmetology building or the library and the dorms on, on either side of that, where it could be constructed and minimally disruptive to our students that are in the library.
How much of a need is there for the, for the elevators?
Well, for you, it'd be a lot.
You'd have to come see me on the bottom floor.
So again, you know, part of the, the thinking with this ten million dollar bond was to spend some of that money to make some of our facilities more ADA accessible. We've done some work on, on restrooms already. Part of this money we earmarked to address some of the other restrooms and just to, because they're already in, in place, there's not a law that says that we have to do it until we modify something and then we have to bring it up to code. But I, I think, you know, we have the opportunity. I, I think it'd be wise for us to try to bring, you know, facilities up to code.
And you're saying that it's not just Uvalde, it's Eagle Pass or parking lots, eh?
Yes, yes. It, it, it doesn't have Del Rio, but it does have Eagle Pass. Eagle Pass are. I believe it's our west side parking lot is, when they built that, they've just put a very thin layer of asphalt and it's already showing potholes. So we need to protect that base. We do have issues in Del Rio, but I think once we get the bids for the work that we're going to do in Del Rio as far as the tech expansion, perhaps we can do a change order to get them to address the parking. That's kind of the thinking with that one over there.
Okay.
Hector, does this amount include the professional input?
The engineering, yes. Yes, that's all in that estimate. And we have, Dirksen Engineer is our civil. So he's done the parking. And any civil work like for the WIT, maybe for the elevators, he would be there. And then we also have the MEP. Derek, do you know offhand who that firm is?
Mechanical engineer out of San Antonio.
That's her name?
MEP, yes, sir.
MEP of San Antonio. And then, of course, our architect is Davis Powell.
Davis Powell. And Davis has worked with several projects that we have had already. So Davis is very familiar with the college. He's proposed nice drawings. And so we're just waiting for the bids to come in.
Next on our agenda?
We need our action.
Okay.
Mr. President, go ahead and make a move. We approve the bond projects as presented.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the bond projects. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Consider an act on A.C. objectives targets 2.2 and 2.3.
Brendan?
Yes. Good evening. How is everybody?
Hi.
Good. You may remember the February meeting when I stood over there and talked a lot of numbers to you. I'm back to talk some numbers, but not as much. So after that meeting, there were a couple of the objectives that we wanted to revisit and do some refining and recalculation on. So I'm here to present those two objectives to you tonight for your consideration for our strategic plan. So objective 2.2 is to increase the number and percentage of students achieving 15 credits and transferring to a Texas university. So what we did on this one, we refined it a little better. We separated it into students who transfer straight out of dual credit. So they never attend here after high school graduation, but they've still gotten the 15 and they're transferring somewhere else. And then the other population is students who do come here after high school graduation, whether they've had dual credit with us prior or not. So on the left, you'll see the dual credit number. So this is students who got dual credit, didn't come to us after high school graduation, but they still transferred and we still get performance-based funding for these students. So you'll see that the baseline there is 213 students out of a total population of 474 at 45%. We're setting the target for a 15% increase, which would mean 245 students. And then on the right side, that first row is the total. So we're looking for, or I'm sorry, our baseline is 624 students out of 2,681 for a 23% transfer rate. We'd like to set that at a 15% increase for 718 students. And then we've divided that total up into students who had previous dual credit with us and students who did not have previous dual credit with us. And you can see those baselines and targets there. For 2.3, it'll be the next, yep. Objective 2.3 is to increase the persistence rate of our students. You'll see here there are two different persistence rates. So there's a fall to spring persistence rate. So that's students who start in the fall, come back in the spring. And then there's a fall to fall persistence rate. So that's students who start in a fall semester and then they're still with us that next fall semester, a year later. For academic students, we refined this a little bit and we came up with a baseline of 746 students for a 69% fall to spring persistence rate among academic students. We'd like to set that target for a 10% increase to 821 students. For their fall to fall persistence rate, this is academic students again, we found a 52% persistence rate. We'd like to set that target as well at a 10% increase to 611 academic students retained from fall to fall or persisting from fall to fall. That next row, technical students. So this is a little bit different and I just want to explain this upfront. Many of our technical students are only with us for a year. So they don't necessarily have a fall to fall retention rate. Not all of them do. So that's why your baseline, like you're in, your population is lower on the fall to fall side because that's only for students who are in a two-year program or who come back for the advanced certificate. So we had a baseline on the fall to spring for technical students of 84% persistence. We'd like to increase that to, by 10% to 364. And then for that fall to fall persistence rate, we had a 53% persistence rate. We'd like to increase that again by 10% to 73 students. And then we disaggregated this a little bit into high demand, the technical students into high demand fields and non-high demand fields. Those are the numbers below in the third and fourth row. So for high demand fields, we have a 90% fall to spring persistence rate. We'd like a 10% increase to 100%. And then we had a 53% persistence rate from fall to fall. Again, this is students who are in, who are attending a two-year program or who are getting into the advanced level certificate program. So 53% baseline, we'd like to increase that by 10% as well. And then non-high demand fields, 82% persistence rate fall to spring. We'd like a 10% increase and 54% fall to fall. We'd also like a 10% increase. Any questions?
Sounds like a very idealistic plan.
I like to, we like to set our goals high. And I'd like to, just really quick, I didn't do this last time and I should have. I'd like to give a shout out to Ryan Aldrich and also to Dr. Garza, who's not here tonight. But they worked really, really super hard with me on getting all of this, all these numbers crunched. And we went back and forth a lot with Dr. Gonzalez and got it all, got it all right. And we're pretty proud of this work. But we wanted to, I wanted to make sure that credit's given where credit's due.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we hear a motion to approve her plan? Did I hear a motion? Motion been made and seconded to approve the plan of the strategic objective targets. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next on the agenda is Consider Act on Funding Board Members to Confer Degrees.
So I'm happy to announce to the four board members here is you got dibs on which ceremony you would like to confer degrees on. You have the second page there that lists the five different ceremonies that we will have. First one is on Friday, 4:00 p.m., Friday, 7:00 p.m. And then Saturday at 10:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Five?
If we add one?
We added one. Yes, that is correct.
Has anybody got a preference?
Right.
Actually, we added two because the other one was in the fall.
Victor, when would you like to be the presenter? When would you like to be the presenter?
Do you have a particular one that you would like to go?
No.
Put me down. Put him down.
You don't want to?
Whatever.
Well, I'd like to probably do it daylight hours.
Daylight hours.
Saturday morning.
Is it Saturday at 10 or Saturday at 2? Saturday morning? Dr. Rivera?
I'll do the high school. Who can do the high school?
The one on Friday? Nita's doing the one at 10 a.m. on Saturday.
At the 16th?
16th, uh-huh.
I'll do that one.
Okay.
Let me switch to the two.
The two o'clock?
The ultimate, I'll do.
Okay.
They're my best friends.
So we have Mr. Lopez at Friday, May 16th at 4:00 p.m. And we have Ms. Shackelford on Saturday, May 17th at 2:00 p.m.
May 16th?
The seventh?
Elena and Rogelio and Tony.
I'll duke it out for what's left.
What are you going to do?
He's doing the 2:00 p.m.
On Saturday.
And Dr. Rivera's doing the 7:00 p.m. on Friday, on the 16th.
Yes.
Well, there's May 17th at 10 a.m.
10 and 6. Either one.
I can do either or both. Doesn't matter.
You have a preference?
I'm going to bid every one of them, so.
Okay.
She start out.
We'll put it at 10 and see if one of the other board members wants to do the 6:00 p.m. If not, we'll call her DHM, her designated editor.
Oh, you want me to do the 6:00 p.m. also?
The 10 and you'll be?
Yeah, on May 17th.
Dr. Watkins?
Yeah.
Doing the 10 a.m. And if none of the other board members can do that, you'll do the evening one.
Okay. I'll just plan on both of them unless somebody wants to step in.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Any further problem there? Do we need a motion?
Please.
Somebody want to make a motion? Motion been made and seconded to appoint the designated individuals to confer degrees. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed.
Dr. Watkins, if, unless somebody has a question on the new hires, we don't have a lease, we don't have to do exact, but be glad to discuss anything on the new hires and terminations. I'll leave it up to the board.
We skip the-
Unless somebody has specific questions that they want. No? There's no need for a closed session.
So we skip this closed session and 10a and b are both passed over?
Yes, sir.
So then we consider an act on a hanger lease?
Table?
Table again?
Mm-hmm.
Next on the agenda is adjourn.
I guess we, I move that we adjourn.
Anybody in favor? Second?
Second.
Second made and- Second, motion made and seconded to adjourn.
Like these two.
Yeah, it's surrounding her.
Okay.
Or it's not in your house?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Victor Lopez?